Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us gathered here today and weathering your storm and let us do that in more ways than one tonight. And from here on out, will be with us as we go and do the city's work as we are in the position to lead the city the right way, Lord, and be with us as we make decisions tonight in your name we pray, amen. Guys, we got a not too bad of an agenda. We have some old business to take care of first with the resolutions, the tax increase stuff, and amending the capital improvement budget funds. There just needed to be a resolution to go along with that that we didn't do. And into new business, we're doing participation in the back to school tax holiday, authorizing that, de-tax resolutions. We're doing, Alex has gotten with some people and declared all kinds of computer equipment that's no longer in use, surplus property, getting rid of it. That's good. That's a lot of stuff that's just sitting there not being used. We are reimbursing up someone who's in the county for fees charged to them for residential garbage service they weren't using for about five years. And that's pretty much it. So we'll jump right into it, Steve. We got you going here, and I'm going ahead and say something real quick if you don't mind. The discussion of funding for Beth Yates at South Highland Park. We have Beth Yates taken care of. The parking deck is doing all that rehabilitation and what have you in-house or paying in-house. The South Highland, we have about twenty thousand total costs, give or take, and we are gonna be responsible for about three items, what, four grand is that?
No, sir. We're responsible for thirteen thousand, seven hundred one dollars.
They're responsible for the three grand.
They're responsible for the, give or take, three.
And then it comes out of the bond proceeds which we have to spend anyway, so we're responsible for the thirteen grand on the South Highland Park. They're doing the other, and also the Beth Yates. So, go ahead.
Yeah, so while we're, you know, everybody keeps asking when we're gonna get to the park, when we're gonna get to the park. Yes, ma'am?
I gotta, I wanted to stop you, because I didn't know if you wanted to do this twice, because the people that always come and ask about this, they come to the council meeting.
I'll do it twice. It doesn't bother me. The restrooms and everything's been closed for twenty-two years.
At South Highland?
At South Highland. They blocked up the walls and everything. So this proposal we're doing is cutting open the openings again, putting in new steel doors, all new plumbing, all new toilet sinks, basically getting the restrooms back working again, painting the pavilion, replacing the benches there, and we've already actually fixed the playground stuff. And then the split rail fence that's around the front of the park, that's just trash. We're gonna pull that up and put black vinyl chain link.
I have one question. Why were the restrooms originally closed twenty years ago?
I wasn't working the correct twenty-two years ago.
I know there was issues or...
There continues to be issues there.
With vandalism or...
There's vandalism. There was a fight on Facebook that was filmed there two weeks ago. I don't know the answers to those questions. The neighborhood is better than it was twenty-two years ago.
But there's no lights too, though, so...
No, there's no lights. But the fight was run up still. It was still daylight.
I'm saying like the stuff that happens in the evening, I mean, it's kinda, I hate to say it, is like a violent heaven.
Sure.
Well, hopefully you secure the property so it's not vandalized the next day.
I don't know if it can be.
There's nothing that we're gonna put out there that's viable. So we're putting the wooden benches from Home Depot instead of very expensive aluminum benches and stuff. We are putting LED lighting under the pavilion, so like our other pavilions, it's bright. Like it's, you'll be able to see there. And now that there's houses directly across the street, we're hoping they help us police that area.
Will it be, the lights be on every night, or is it just as people are there?
They're on the photocell. So just like the rest of the pavilions, soon as it gets dark enough, it will be extremely bright in that area.
And I do think with that park being, I guess, kinda secluded, I don't think that the bathrooms should be open all the time over there. Okay.
You know, when I first took the job, I used to complain that the bathrooms were locked during the business hours. Me and Yo had this conversation the other day. You know, they literally put bars in Noble Park. And I don't believe in bars on a pavilion, but when we unlocked the restrooms for the first two weeks, they tore two sinks off the wall, pulled a toilet out of the ground, and homeless locked themselves in the restrooms. So the restrooms were only being locked for events when they rented the pavilion.
So how much money is left in that bond and proceeds? Because I think, I mean, that community, they've been complaining a lot, not complaining, but they've been inquiring about that park a lot. And I was just trying to see, how can we go ahead and get the ball rolling on that?
Well, I was telling them, we've basically been waiting on y'all. Like, this document should be familiar to y'all. I sent it out three or four months ago. So besides the enormous task of the disc golf course that we started at Lake Howard and everything right now, my guys will be starting on the restrooms and pavilions and the lights and electrical stuff.
But that's pending we approve the money, right?
Correct.
So...
Yeah, I mean, it's no brainer to me.
Sounds great.
Are you gonna put cameras or anything else here eventually?
I looked at cameras. I've actually talked with utilities board about putting fiber internet in every park that we have, which would be amazing. Very costly. The camera systems are quite expensive, the ones you can view remotely. The first one that I got, and the problem is like if you wanna put it where you can see toward the pavilion, it has to be freestanding on a pole and it's on wifi.
Gotcha.
You're looking five or six thousand dollars for three cameras.
And how much, is that a month?
No, that's to purchase the camera. As long as you have the wifi, there's not any monthly charge for that.
Have you looked into getting cameras at all the parks for the pavilions? What's that total? I know you know.
That's something that we'll probably end up doing in-house over time, starting with obviously our busiest parks. But getting the fiber, you know, they're currently redoing all the overhead utilities at Noble Park. So until we know exactly where the poles are gonna be, it's kinda hard to guess how many cameras we would need to view all of these pavilions.
Maybe that's something we need to think about too, especially if we're gonna have lots.
Hopefully by it's time to do capital for next year, I'll have all those numbers.
I got two requests.
Yes, ma'am.
Two questions. One is, can, because they're gonna ask, can you give them an actual date that you're gonna start? And then once you start, can you give updates until it's completed? Please.
I'll try. I mean...
At least every meeting we'll say something.
But you don't have to say it. Just tell Ashton that he can give the update.
Yeah.
Well, let's say three weeks.
To start?
To start.
Can we just put a date on it? Like an actual date?
Three weeks from today.
Because when people hear a date, it makes it realistic.
Well, the problem, I mean, between the special events and the grass growing and the rain, I mean, that thing can be very fluid.
But it's okay, but if you tell them the six and then they know it's raining or whatever, then they're...
And nothing's happening on the six, they're gonna be up here for the next minute.
No, they won't, but they'll be understanding. I mean, because we've been telling them, yeah. And we've been telling them that it's coming and we have it scheduled, which is, you know, we haven't approved the money, but they don't see that we haven't approved the money. They just see Steve is only working it.
Oh, I'll leave it then weekly. I understand.
So...
Okay. Sounds like we got it going, like I said, it's been waiting for a while, so there's nothing...
It's our last park that we haven't really done major work at in the last fifteen months, so it's exciting.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Are we talking about the street department? The joint venture?
Yes, I'm about to. So we're going on the Toro wide track dingo mini loader. The, y'all got that email with the pictures and stuff about what they work with, why they use it, cleaning out the drainages and such, a mini dozer kinda. And we have talked with Lake Howard Authority, and Billy is gonna, has already fell in love with the idea about maintaining the trail of this thing. That's the industry standard in the trail maintaining, what he does, bicycle hiking and stuff. So they're going to split the cost. City's gonna pay for it all. Lake Howard Authority's going to send us twenty grand. And so basically reimburse us twenty grand, because they're gonna split, split it. And I'm sure Billy will find a way to use it as much as...
Every day.
Yeah.
Every day.
And then, you know, him and Reed will battle it out, so that's the quote here is forty.
This is conditioned with our authority, including the...
Already did. Eight of the people said yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, emails out for a while, so it's forty thousand, five thirty-three. Lake Howard Authority's gonna give us twenty of that, so... And it's, is that bond procedure or no?
No, sir, that's American Rescue.
Okay. And then, we got that resolution on there. The allocation of the sales tax proceed is on here. The resolutions that we discussed are on here for approval. Anything else further on that? You said something.
How are you going to kill number fourteen since it's still on his old business? So procedurally, how do we?
We just have to address it and go through it.
I thought we voted down, like, and then we go on.
You just have to vote on it and then move to the next, because you can't go into old, new business if there's old business. But you said about the...
Yeah, the, my understanding of the resolution we do need to approve, it should represent, representative of the medical center, it should be still a target healthcare authority, right?
No, not, it was something, what did we say?
That's illegal.
The legal, the legal name is what target healthcare authority is, right? So, Alex.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm, I will have that changed.
Got it.
Okay.
Sir, if you can amend number seventeen. Thank you.
All right, so we will, we will, we will bring up fourteen, and if we don't get an introduction, it would fail. Or do you want to go through voting?
I think so. I mean, does it have, you talking about on their old business or...
On their old business.
I'm not looking at the agenda.
That's the one we wanna kill.
Do you have to introduce it?
According, according to the league, it has to be introduced and voted down.
Right. So obviously you have to get introduced, actually, so...
All right.
And then we have my baristas here to discuss the drainage improvements. Michael?
Good evening, everyone. There is a change order that's been presented to us on the drainage improvements project. They're at location one, which is East Clay and South Church Avenue. And a couple of things, there's been some conflicts with utilities on that project that they've had to kinda work around, water lines and other things, and then also there was an unknown structure off the right away coming in and tying into our storm system. And basically you didn't know it was there until you dug it up and you found that connection. So they have requested a change order for twelve thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and eighty-three cents to repair that box, make that tie, and all the other ancillary things that go along with that demo and sidewall, put new fittings in.
Michael, not to cut you off, it's like been one thing after another, I mean, with that, with that project over there. Like, the, um, the citizen's been calling me, I mean, people's borderlines have been busted, I mean, it's just, it's like one thing after another. So is it, is it getting better? Because I mean, one week my phone was blowing up, because I even reached out to these two guys. I mean, it's just a lot of stuff going on over there. So is it on schedule? What's...
Yeah, well, I mean, as far as scheduling goes, I think they're scheduled to finish the East Clay by next Friday and open it back up. And then they're gonna move to West Walnut and Norton. As far as the water lines getting hit, my understanding was there's an old two-inch cast iron, there was two water mains in there. I could have this wrong, but all the existing services were attached to an existing old two-inch either cast iron or galvanized water main. And so you could be working over here and not even on the water main, and the water main just start breaking.
And that just wasn't documented for you to have put in the scope?
Yeah, so we didn't, those connections, if we lay a pipe back where a pipe is now, we're assuming we're not having a conflict. But when you open up the ground and pipes are old and there's movement and vibration around it, things break and they gotta be repaired.
So it's on it, so it's...
And I think they took, I think that what the utility board did was instead of connecting it back into that old two-inch line, they went ahead and moved it over to the newer six-inch ductile that they had and replaced all the laterals over to the ductile, is my understanding.
They have an issue with the depth of the water lines as well.
Yeah, so, you know, you don't really know exactly the level. You could pothole a water line, but if you don't pothole exactly where you got a crossing, you don't know exactly depth-wise how your storm's gonna intersect with that water line.
But if you've got a conflict and you're having to downsize, are you still getting the same result of if you...
Capacity or...
Yes, so the ones that were had to downsize, they're at the very top of this drainage line. So the hydraulic capacity has been checked and there's no issue with capacity and drainage in that line that was downsized.
So it's not gonna come back and bite us later?
No. We checked, for a twenty-five-year storm event, there's no, you know, adverse impact on that pipe.
So this money would come out of general fund or where? Didn't we use the American Rescue funds on this initially? I mean, if we were to do it, would it come out of American Rescue?
It would probably come out of American Rescue fund.
Because that's where we initiated it, with the whole project?
Yeah, this...
Yeah, this, it should be okay.
And they gotta, they gotta do it.
Yeah.
And just to let's update y'all, there may be another change order coming. I'm trying to, the recycled concrete out of Avondale. I've talked with the Talde County Board of Education, and they're looking at allowing us to use some of that recycled concrete as base material for backfilling around these pipes. Because it's great, it's graded and clean and can be used in road bed applications. So the contractors went and looked at it, and I think there could be a change order coming with savings for use of the recycled concrete from the earth project out of Avondale Mills. How much? I don't know. Their best estimate was around the six, seven thousand dollar range at this point, but we don't know.
Yeah, it's miniscule in my eyes, if you look at the whole project, so it's got to be done.
But I think so. I just hate...
Right. Okay. I don't, I don't think that's gonna be a problem, Michael. But any, anything else, any other updates?
Not related to this specific project, but just an update, the Walnut Road Bridge replacement, we're finishing up the plans on those. And I hope to get those to Aldott for review and review of the permitting process on that. And then if that, once they approve that, I'll be coming back to you guys reviewing a cost estimate and then seeing if y'all can move forward with the bid process at that time. And I think those are RIA funds that were appropriated to city sometime in September, October of last year. So I think there's a one-year window on that. We're not there yet, but, you know, just to keep y'all updated.
So it's already earmarked right now until that twelve-month period ends?
Correct, and I think that it's not, this is not a reimbursement program. So what they have done on the projects in the past is once the city lets the project and gets all the contract documents in and issues a notice of award, they cut a check to the city for the maximum amount of two hundred fifty thousand. At that time. It's not, you don't have to cash flow it and submit for reimbursement and the normal like tap projects.
So as long as it's lit before September thirtieth, it'll be in this fiscal year?
Yes. I'm, I'm not sure when the funding deadline is, but that, we plan to let it, if y'all are good with the cost, we plan to let it before then.
Good to do?
Yeah.
All right, man, thank you so much. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I got, I do have one request. We talked about budget, but Alex, when we come to budget, I know it'll be your first go-around, but do you think we could get this ball rolling maybe a month early?
Yes, sir. I think that still, we'll be, as the mayor, we're talking about that as well, and you guys doing that as well.
So I'd like to do that, just since it's your first time and we're always, I think everybody that does budget runs behind at some point, but I'd rather try to be as head as much as possible.
Thank you. Yes, sir. So start on June.
In June?
Yes, sir.
They'll give you a name? All right, Nate Osk, you got some additional funding that was unforeseen?
Yeah, I mean, basically, same, same thing, you know, we, the, the resolution for the station renovation stuff, we ran into an unforeseen issue with the gas line movement and a slight increase in painting and a couple of the various things that it took well within the ten percent that's allowed in the resolution for the special funding outside of y'all taking any action. It was more just letting y'all know that we've had a few things pop up, but we're, we're still on track and moving ahead.
And in the resolution, you know, the total of all work, you know, it was broke outline items in the budget, but the resolution has the total, and so that ten percent, it's under that ten percent of the total. So there's no action required of the council to amend anything. We can amend it, but there's no action required, vote required.
Sir, do you know the cost yet?
Sixty-two hundred total.
Is this just back station two?
No, this is, this is the, the total hundred and nine thousand dollar project cost that was approved.
Okay. That's two separate.
No, ma'am. It's approved as, in, in the, in the resolution, it's approved as station renovations, one item altogether.
Yeah, that one total.
It's two separate line items, but that's what I was...
But not in the resolu, well, I was getting from the ten percent. The resolution is all together. It's lumped together. So with that piece of the total ten percent of what's on the resolution, that's where I got that wrong? It's a total project cost.
The project is two separate projects, though.
Not, not the way it's listed on the resolution.
But we discussed it in your capital. It was just, I mean, it's fire department thing, it's not, I mean, it's no big deal. I just wanna know. We need to know, I need to know which, what's what.
Yeah, so just, just whether, is it station two?
One of it's ten percent of that project.
Some, some of it is, there's, there's some of the...
The gas line, where is it?
It's spatially.
Yeah, but the...
The painting was a station one.
But the painting was at station one and it was more than two.
But with the, do you have the copy of the resolution? So that's what I was talking about with the total, and then the, the...
The, the resolution states, as itemized in the individual budget recap, it's attached hereof, and that's, that's what's attached.
And that's what the ten percent overall.
I'm telling you, those are two separate projects. You have a project coming out of the fund here, the building fund for City Hall, as well as a project coming out of the building fund for the police department. The project coming out of City Hall exceeds the ten percent.
Okay, so that means we need to take action then?
Yeah.
And we have to say, okay.
I mean, it's no big deal, just, I mean...
We can fix it. We can handle that. That's all. Can, can we just write that up? Is that on?
Yeah, I mean, they can get together and report the meeting if you give us a few minutes.
No problem. For the station one...
It's the station one project painting exceeds the ten percent.
So we're just writing up the vote to go with it? Anything else, Nate?
No, I'm sorry.
All the new truck outfitted and equipped and ready, good job?
Well, we're, we're working on it. I mean, that's...
I saw the striping and stuffs on there.
Sounds good.
It's, I mean, some of the things, some of the components are, you know, six to eight weeks out. Some of them were getting done now, some of them are in between, so it's, all those things will...
Cap, sorry, I have one more thing. Cap, or do you know the status on the equipment and stuff of the K nine vehicle that we ordered? I mean, obviously, it's, it's not here yet, is it?
No, sir, it's not here. Another couple of months, supposed to get on air.
Okay. Because, I mean, in actuality, with that truck being down so much, the dog can't even come to work, right?
That's correct.
But he's been driving the Tahoe here and there, hasn't he? He brought the dog, I know, at least one or two days.
But that Tahoe, and it's with that year line model?
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's a lemon.
It is.
And that's being nice about it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll be expecting that, and that'll set us up a lot better. How old is that dog? Or both dogs?
Both dogs? One about five years, so. Now, Dreggo's the older one, and he's already going through some athletic problems.
Yeah. I got a shepherd, he just turned ten. I was like, it's a matter of time.
Okay, does anybody have anything else to add? Department heads?
Tiffany does, but one quick question.
I'm sorry.
Where is number seventeen resolution in the package?
It is. It is under the work session, sir. Resolution number twenty-eight dash two zero two three. It's titled work session number four, if you look on the right-hand corners.
In your packet that you got with the work session?
Tiffany's question is how does this provide, I mean, where's your muscle? How does this provide for possible construction of partial recreation facilities? We've got the operation and maintenance for new stuff, which I assume is for new stuff, and the park and rec, I, is that, what? What, what are those two? Seven and a half or...
See, it's under twine.
Just making sure we're understanding that.
I don't wanna see how it adds on.
You got a five percent, a two and a half percent.
Okay, the... One of them, okay, the, the five, five percent is that's the operation of the new park. And the two and a half is the current, just operate, park and rec, capital, whatever y'all...
Whatever they want.
Want to reserve.
For current.
Whatever y'all want. You all can allocate it, but you just have a reserve set aside.
For park and rec.
For park and rec, that, the debt.
And from, and from, and from what part of the bucket do you build something?
The debt would be for that new...
That would be a debt. Okay, that's a debt.
And I must say, say, I mean, you may have to readdress this. Once you get a true cost of the debt, you will have to incur to build a new facility.
Okay, we don't know what we're spending.
Because, I mean, right now, we didn't, I didn't have, we didn't have any dollars to go with that. So you may have to take, you know, from maybe your general fund, since you pay off the general fund, any excess is going to the general fund reserve anyway. So once you get a true cost...
You can then move it back.
You can reallocate based on what it will, that way you'll have your debt secured, your payment secured.
And if we can find other savings or support other borrowing, we can generate money from other sources that we service over time.
I, I know y'all saying that, but if we, I know, but if it's not, to me, if it's not itemized or written like that and y'all say, well, we can change it later, we don't, I just, I don't wanna be on board with this and then we tell people something and then that's not what happened, so I lie.
Okay, so...
You see what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but you remember I asked the question, how much were we looking at?
Because from what you, you said, this five percent is only two hundred thousand dollars. And look, that's park and rec, new operations and maintenance. And to me, operation says new employees, right? That's the, right?
I don't know exactly. I just knew, I would, we would put money in there so you'd be able to operate and keep...
Just think about our general operating budget that we do every year and scale it down to just park and rec. That's what it would be. Pretty much me and it.
However, your debt, now, that's, the debt is, I know that's probably a low, I know that's a low figure, but I don't have any numbers to go on.
And the key, Tiffany...
Now, if you want to reallocate based on, we can try to get some better, better figures.
That's the point of the local budget, I mean, the local resolution, we could amend it to change that allocation.
It's okay, though, because the four million is never gonna buy a thirty million dollar recreation complex, no piece of it. The fact is, is this sets us up to be able to borrow money that this debt service that we're allocating can use to, can use to pay the mortgage.
So, and that's what I'm saying. I don't think even that is, I think that's a low number, to be honest. But once you figure out what, and you can take some from that general fund if you want to and put there. I just didn't have anything to work with.
And there would be, there would be debt service money coming from other parts of our budgets as well. It's not just the increase.
And the normal stuff that we've already always had.
Well, this is just for the, for the new debt. So if you want to reduce your general and add more to your debt, but this is what you're building.
I know, but it, but it really doesn't matter what we do. If y'all say, well, we're gonna do this, and then once we do this, it'll be set in stone, but then we can go back and amend it. We can go back and change it.
Well, if committed to add to it if we need it, because we don't know the number we need yet. And at a minimum, eight point seven five percent will go into a fund that pays the mortgage. So it's, you're buying thirty million dollar house, a twenty million dollar house, and this is adding an extra couple of hundred thousand to be able to pay the mortgage. So it's not expected that it would be paid for in real time. It's gonna be paid over fifteen or twenty years.
I just wanna make sure everything that's supposed to be, as far as the park and rec, is listed as a line item and it's not left out. That's, that's what I'm saying.
And, and some, I mean, not necessarily debt, that's, debt, we'll spend on debt, but the other stuff, we still do have to approve it. So it has to come... So, it has to come to us anyways.
So, you'll always have the numbers to look at, right?
And I expect you will have to amend that portion of those to debt proceeds.
Yeah.
I just didn't have, you know, as I stated when we met before, unless I have some numbers as to what your anticipating the cost of that facility to be. And how much you're planning to borrow, I have nothing to work with.
Yeah.
So, I put something in there just to set aside for debt, however, um, with the thought, you have twenty-five percent going to your general fund reserve.
Bullet.
You can reallocate, and in that general fund reserve, you can do what you wish, what you all decide. And I think if you need to go back and amend the resolution to move some from your general fund reserve to your debt proceeds, once you know how much that debt. Your debt payments will be, your debt service will be, then, then you can address it then.
And then, we, then we borrow accordingly, but we know we've committed to build something.
That's a hundred percent commitment on that debt right here.
So, then we have to go find the money to pay for it.
Well, that's, I don't think you, I, I think you. My personal opinion is, I think you would wanna set aside your debt payment out of this, I mean, that, that would be, at least you know.
That's what I'm saying, like, E is a hundred percent, that, all that's going to the debt, but then, say, we got more, we need more, we just go to the twenty-five percent and can pull some of it from there.
But you can reallocate it, let, I mean, you know, I had, my personal statement earlier was to secure, but you couldn't do it percentage-wise. Is make sure you have enough to secure that annual debt payment.
Which we don't know.
Which you don't know.
We won't elect till next year.
Until, well, you won't know it till you get your, uh, your allocation for the building, and once you know how much you'll have to borrow to complete that.
Which they, they're waiting, they said they're waiting on a third party for the second half of the economic study, correct, still?
Yeah, I, I reached out to both of them yesterday, and it's just crickets, it's absolute cricket.
And this was probably, this was before last meeting when I reached out to them, so I don't, I don't know.
Well, the importance of this, getting this done now, is that we can, can begin allocate premium revenue in the fourth quarter, well, which is really the first quarter of the new year. To pay for the, uh, uh, police salaries and other things that we know that are coming in, plus, we can start banking money we know we need to spend, if we delay it, we're gonna run out of money.
One more question, the tablets were nearing, nearing the end of the year.
Look, I sure would love to have my little tablets to these.
Killing a lot of trees.
We need, we need to consult with Cusick Valley Medical Center about their Director Point software, which is what we need to be using.
But, I mean, honestly, we don't need anything, I don't mean, I don't know, I don't know what it is, but we don't need anything fancy to, we need access to our email to get these documents that she emails to us.
Yeah.
And maybe an interactive program.
But the, but the distribution, whether they're just emailing a bunch of stuff out, allows them to have control, version control.
Pull it back, swap it.
It's a really, really neat program, I don't know what it costs, but.
It's actually very inexpensive.
I mean, it's a great way that they, they communicate with all their board people, and everything is all organized, rather than just a bunch of stuff.
But we've been talking about it, we need to nail something down.
I'll give you a proposal for, for that stuff, it's like two hundred eighty-nine dollars a, a night time.
Can we have that the next, next week?
Get that, whatever, next two days.
Okay. All right, um, that's it. That's it, we'll, uh, resume downstairs, let me.